Good evening, everyone. You ready? I'm sorry, I thought you were ready. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session, September 2, 2015. Condis meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Mr. Patrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allot.
Present.
Mr. Baltimore.
Here.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Mr. Klinsky.
Present.
Ms. Reed.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Present. Ms. Daniels, please do the invocation.
Yes, let's have a moment of silence, followed by a moment of generosity for the millions of people across the world who today either find themselves without homes or whose homes are so unsafe they can no longer live there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Mr. Baltimore, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to communications, we have none this evening. Courtesy of the floor, outside to my right, anyone who would like to come to the mic, please do so at this moment.
Good evening, my name is Robert Kennedy. I'm on here today, my number is 877-9943. I'm here today on behalf of the youth of Harrisburg. But first, I want to speak a little about the program that we have. We took a special project uptown Harrisburg to our King and Embassy Church this year, and it worked out really well. We had input from the Attorney General's Office, Special Agent Work with us, the state, state police came by, some of their local police and probation office, many of the other entities that contributed to a significant initiative that I want to take uptown because what I looked at is some of the things that we really needed to address uptown, and it worked well. We talked to the kids about crime in that area, crime in general, we talked about revitalization of the community, we talked about unification and how we should unify and come together. They made a little rap song about it. And the kids, we have a diverse group of kids because with our site, Salak say, I can bring kids in from any place. I had them from Cumberland County and all the tri-area, Stilton, you name it, and they got along really well together, and it worked out really well, and I appreciate all those that contribute to it. We also hired four young ladies, that's what it ended up being, we hired anybody that would come, but four young ladies came and worked in our program this year and rest care fund that they're funded. We won't call it stifling because they did work, and we taught them, you know, the significance of working. So it really worked well, and that's what we contributed. What I'm saying is, we work with all agencies, I think it's a logic model that we can use for all the Salak site and for the city of Harrisburg, because what we do need is to continue to work with the police and all the people that's in our community. The other thing, I want to talk to the young people of Harrisburg, hate is on the rise, and I just want to say to the general public, don't let it affect you young people and your family. You know, some things happened just recently here that is not really what our young people are all about. We hear it when it hit the news. I met with the young people this weekend, but they are a little concerned about the parents and the people in the community not being out there for them. They told me this weekend, and I don't want to put a light on myself, they said this weekend, they only see me out in the community and Chief Carter, 24/7 almost, and they really respect that. But we don't have, we don't have any young men on the street, like they should be addressing the issue with these kids, and that's what they're looking at. So the hate is rising in them, we don't condone any violence, we do not condone it, but trust me, there's a reason for it. And the reason, we can point back to the community, the mothers and fathers and the people in those communities, gotta get out there and support those kids. But I do respect Chief Carter and what he's doing for the police force because the kids recognize it, and I thank everybody for it.
You're welcome, thank you, sir. Anyone else to my right?
Good evening, my name is Mr. Boyd, and I'm a community activist, and I always like to say to the city of Harrisburg, "I told you so." Remember me? I'm the individual that told this city that you haven't seen anything yet. Once again, I'm going to repeat those words to you, and I'm going to be more powerful this time. You haven't seen nothing yet. I'd like to remind the city of Harrisburg, we are a very close-knit city. We are not a racist city, but we are a city dealing with class. I'm the individual that have been fighting the Broad Street Market and the Broad Street Corporation for years. I was granted something just a week ago, and I went back in the Broad Street Market really feeling good about that. I walked about 100 feet, and I was cussed out in the Broad Street Market, bullied, threatened. I like to say certain things to the city, I know constitutional law, I know what you can do, and I know what you can't do. A civil rights, to file a civil rights complaint against the city of Harrisburg, and also, my understanding is what, who's running the Broad Street Market does not have the interest of the whole city. All I ask once again, and I ask very earnestly, we need people from the city of Harrisburg to be more interested in the Broad Street Market. You have a corporation, someone running the market from across the street, care nothing about it, told me, and this was said to me on the same day, excuse me, you're evading, you are, get away from me, and I'm telling you, get away from me. All I'm saying to this city, and also, once again, you hold the keys, you do, the mayor, that's okay, but you hold the key to the Broad Street Market, the last asset to this city. They want to change the Broad Street Market, making and remaking Midtown. Wake up, people, and for this, for us to even contemplate for a nonprofit and a poor profit that cares nothing about the residents of this city except Midtown, I'm saying once again, that is our last asset. Everyone says we don't have the money. What about creative management? We have to do something. Once again, thank you very much, and I hope I don't have to come back two weeks to fight once again to get in the Broad Street Market. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else to my right? Anyone in the middle?
Our council members, my name is Eric Lohmer, Harrisburg citizen and taxpayer, noting that you're likely agenda, I'll try and keep my remarks as brief as I can. But I am here today on a very, very important issue. Last time I was here was about parking. This is infinitely more important to me. I represent a group of concerned Harrisburg citizens and professionals from the Capital Area Coalition on Homelessness, some of whom are with me today, who have been meeting for more than two years to try and wrap our minds around what we can do about the problem of homeless youth in central Pennsylvania. Before I start, I want to ask council members each a question, and as I ask, I want you to please just take a quick moment and think back when you were a teenager. You're 16, you're 17-years-old, you were probably in high school, maybe had an after-school job, but I feel safe in assuming that all of you had a place to hang your jacket, take off your shoes, eat something, and safely lay down your head to sleep. Here's a question I have for you. If you didn't have any of that, if your family has thrown you from the home you knew, or you left it because it wasn't safe for you, your extended family is too remote and just too embarrassed to ask a friend for a place to stay, end of the school day, where would you go? Do you have money for a hotel room for more than one night? How long would you sleep in your car if you're fortunate enough to have one? Where do you clean yourself, neatly store the clothes that you need to be able to hold your head up in school the following day? Food, do you have any? What do you do next? How do you find help? I'm asking you this today because many kids in Dauphin County and right here in Harrisburg are having to face these kinds of decisions and often end up sleeping outside. How do I personally know this? Because not long after I moved to Harrisburg, in 2012, I took one of them into my home. At great personal risk, I opened my meager guest room to Jordan, a slight and effeminate 18-year-old whose local family had told him to leave their home due to his gender expression. Why my guest room? Because as I came to find out, our city, Harrisburg, the capital of one of these United States, has no safe immediate shelter available for unemancipated, unprepared, and unaccompanied youth that is safe and accommodating. Currently, there are only two options for these kids, a 21-day stay at the Schaffner Center alongside juvenile offenders in a building that was constructed as a prison, or the very impersonal foster care system. Adult shelters by law now cannot accept the unemancipated, so they stay outside. Let's be frank with ourselves, there are many more in our community than just my friend Jordan. We hear it from teachers, we hear it from responders, churches, other homeless adults, and other areas. As many of you may already know, youth homelessness is a very serious issue nationwide. Homeless youth are children to the age of 24 who lack parental, foster, or institutional care, that's the definition. The National Runaway Switchboard estimates that in this country, on any given night, there are approximately 1.3 million homeless youth living unsupervised on the streets in abandoned buildings with friends or with strangers. The National Alliance to End Homelessness reports that homeless youth are at a higher risk for physical abuse, sexual exploitation including trafficking, mental health disability development, substance abuse, and yet, death. Next year, it's estimated that 5,000 unaccompanied youth in this country will die as a result of assault, illness, or suicide. Most of these kids aren't sick or disabled, they aren't intellectually challenged or socially inept, they're just as mainstream as anybody here. What they are is unloved. So I pointed out, we have a problem. I think you agree with me, and what I want to know is, are you concerned? Do you care? I seriously want to hear you say this with me right now. Yes, I care about our homeless youth.
Yes, I care about our homeless youth.
Thank you. So what do we do about it? I'm standing in front of you today because on a visit to a youth shelter facility, the group that I work with found out that more recently, the federal government has begun to make a really concerted effort to eradicate youth homelessness in this country. So as a result of this new awareness, there are now groups in areas as close to Philadelphia, such as the one we saw, that have made amazing strides in this area. They have welcoming and affirming shelters, offering basic, comfortable shelter and life-saving programs designed to help these kids find their own productive path. Just Google Valley Youth House Philadelphia, and you will see exactly what I mean. It's amazing, and I have trouble talking about it because it was such an emotional experience for me. We can do this too. First though, we need to know the size and nature of our problem. So we're going to count them. That's what we're going to do first. My group is creating a survey application, very brief survey, an app, maybe to exist on a phone, to give to educators, responders, caregivers, other appropriate community resources who are possible points of contact with this youth, or their friends, possibly their families. This very brief survey will collect and anonymously record the data in our area, the numbers, the point of origin, and their intended destinations. So at the end, we'll know how many and if they intend to stay here. Once we can prove that, all we need to do is apply for the funding. So what do I need from the council? I need your voice for support, and I just got that. Thank you so much, you don't know what that means. The other thing I need is your presence. We need a kickoff, we have a kickoff meeting next week. The why, 1:00 PM Thursday, that's all I want. I'm not currently asking for money, I'm not currently asking for policy change, I just need an hour of your time, next Thursday at 1:00, if I haven't already taken the hour that I have here, and I have a brochure for each one of you outlining what the project is, the meetings, and I hope you'll take one of those. To close, this issue knows no political boundaries, and the city is requesting all of your support. A child who has no place to call home needs all the help she or he can get, so I hope we give yours by attending next Thursday, and I thank you so much for your valuable time.
And what YMCA? What Y?
YW.
The YW, I'm sorry.
And then what was that website again?
The website for...
Valley Youth.
Valley Youth House.
Valley Youth.
And include Philadelphia. They have, I think now, 12 facilities in the Philadelphia area. Philip, can I give this to you?
Okay, yeah, she can give it to her, please. Thank you.
Take hold. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. Anyone else in the middle? Anyone else to our left? Hearing none, we'll move on to the agenda. Approval of minutes, approval of the special legislative session minutes of August 25, 2015, that was a clerical error. Any deletions, omissions, corrections, council members? Hearing none, all approve. Oh, thank you.
Someone?
Thank you. Report to committees, report from Chair Allot on the Budget and Finance Committee meeting of August 27, 2015. Mr. Allot, are you ready with your report?
I am, thank you.
You're welcome.
The Budget and Finance Committee met on Thursday, August 27, 2015. Up for discussion were two resolutions, Resolution 62 and Resolution 68. Resolution 62 is the fourth proposed budget reallocation. I'll break it down into the sections that we discussed. First up was allocation of money for outsourcing vehicle repairs. Second was allocation for funds due to the lack of payment from the senators. Third was reallocation to cover funds for the delay in the LED program. Also up for allocation for receipt of a grant from Dauphin County for synchols at $22,000. An allocation for funds for donations for Kipona, allocation for increase in police extra duty fund, as well as an acknowledgement for receipt of a donation from a citizen for the Harrisburg Police Department Penn Pal budget for $500. Out of that, the one lingering item that I just want to encourage the administration to do is, in meeting with the senators, to get some understanding of what the ongoing maintenance needs might be. I understand we have the unknown entities that we cannot predict, but to get a better handle on what are some of the ongoing maintenance needs so we can budget accordingly for that in subsequent years, which is my only request out of that. Resolution 68 was simply just ratifying that the grant requirements of a peer-to-peer grant from DCNR were met, and they were, so I encourage my colleagues to vote for both Resolution 62 and Resolution 68. Also up for discussion was our mid-year budget review. Simply put, and anyone following the status of the city would hear this publicly as well, that the revenue is off. The biggest indicator is leading to the off, I guess not the off of revenue, due to the lack of meeting the proposed revenue, is largely coming from lower-than-estimated EIT taxes as well as the parking revenue. So the mayor has now, today, plans to remedy that going forward. This needs to be an ongoing discussion, and I look forward to that going forward. So that is the conclusion of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Allot. Moving on to report from Chair Reed on the Public Works Committee meeting of September 1, 2015. Ms. Reed, are you ready with your report?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
There's a Public Works Committee meeting held on Tuesday, September 1, 2015. Present were myself, Councilman Allot, Councilwoman Daniels, and Council President Wanda Williams. The agenda contained several resolutions that included the contract with the Efficiency Network, also known as TENS, and the funding for the project. We started out with Resolution 56, a resolution authorizing the entry of the street, excuse me, Resolution 56, a resolution authorizing the application to Impact Harrisburg to fund up to $3.6 million to the cost of the city's streetlights and other exterior lights, which provided us first an explanation as to what Impact Harrisburg is, and who was on the board, and what is the purpose. Present were the Mayor Eric Papenfuss, Doug Walmer, the Deputy Solicitor Neil Grover, also present, who was also present but did not represent Impact Harrisburg because he is the chairperson of the board for Impact Harrisburg, which is a 501(c)(3) that had been set up to make recommendations to the Commonwealth Court to use the monies that were left in the silos for infrastructure and economic development from Harrisburg's recovery in 2013. $6 million are to be used for capital improvement projects, and although the board is in place, it has not been able to apply for the $3.6 million of monies because they're waiting to hire an executive director to place that application. The $3.6 million is being requested, ideally would go to pay off the loan granted to us by M&amp;T Bank. The purpose would be so that the future cost savings acquired from the streetlight retroflits will go to the general fund and be available for further financing of public works projects and other public works needs. The way that it will work is that the city will apply to Impact Harrisburg to request a disbursement for these funds. The board meets every two weeks, has met every two weeks since March of this year, and yet they have yet to set up an executive director as of yet. They are looking at making the application as a best-case scenario in November of January of next year, November of this year or January of next year. We then went on to Resolution 10 of 2015, which is an ordinance authorizing executive execution of a lease purchase agreement between the city of Harrisburg and M&amp;T Bank for the amount of $3,200,000. Present were Mr. David Worthington, Mr. Paul Black, and Mr. Gossett, all from M&amp;T Bank. They explained that the loan in the panel, what's the panel, they explained the loan with the panel and expressed a desire to work with the city and be a partner in the recovery of Harrisburg. The $3.2 million loan is for eight years at 3.5% interest. Included in their amortization payments is a guarantee of sorts of $500,000 to come from the silos requested from Impact Harrisburg. This agreement is assuming that there will almost be a guarantee that Resolution 56 will be granted. If not, the loan will be built into an additional $500 debt that would have to come out of the 2016 general fund budget. The loan will have, the loan will have to have a bond counsel opinion letter, which we have requested but yet have to receive from the solicitor's office. The funding, the granting, the funding is granted to the city from Impact Harris, if this funding is granted to the city from Impact Harrisburg to pay off the loan early, the city will have to pay a prepayment penalty of 3% to M&amp;T Bank, which is approximately $92,000 if the loan is paid off at the beginning of the loan. With our current financial state, I ask, as the chair, I'm very cautious about adding an additional amount of debt to the city already, to the city's already thin budget. Also, as the chair, I do not take lightly that the administration is taking out a loan with intentions of paying it off early with the understanding that the prepayment penalty could be financing much-needed positions in the Public Works Department. Resolution 50. Resolution 50 is a resolution authorizing entry into the streetlight upgrade and general savings contract with the Efficiency Network, also known as TENS. Present from TENS were Mr. Michael Schneider and Mr. Patrick Regan. TENS has provided different contractors, provided us with different contracts that they have throughout the region. This project, however, is the largest project of its type that this company will have to date. The guaranteed energy projections that they are citing and on other projects have not been realized because the work has not been completed for more than a year, and no hard numbers have been realized as to how much, no hard numbers have been realized as of yet as to how much energy savings has been provided on the projects that they have done. They are a Pittsburgh-based company that will be utilizing Wetherspoons and Williams LLC to locally manage the project. There was much discussion about using MBEs for the contract, and TENS is committed to making sure that using the required MBEs for the project. The energy savings, the energy savings in the project is just that, is just a projection. As we heard today in the mayor's stated, the city addressed, be forewarned that when projections, then we're dealing with projections, we cannot expect, that we cannot expect the same from the parking contracts and other contracts, it is not a guarantee. Resolution 60. Resolution 60 is approving the professional service contract of suburban lighting to provide continued professional consultants to the city of Harrisburg. Suburban lighting will continue to provide consultants to the city of Harrisburg, they will also be working on the 278 streetlights from PP&amp;N, trying to get them converted over to the city's streetlight system. Resolution 64. Resolution 64 is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter a memorandum of understanding with Dauphin County Conservation District for erosion and sediment and pollution control. The public comment was given after each agenda item so that the public could get their questions answered from the professionals on that matter. The meeting was adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Moving on to report from Chair Baltimore on the Public Safety Committee meeting of September 2, 2015. Mr. Baltimore, are you ready with your report?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Public Safety Committee, excuse me, met on Wednesday, September 2. The meeting was called order at 5:42. Members present were myself, Mr. Allot, and we were joined by Ms. Williams and Ms. Daniels. Comments from the chair were made with the intent to open dialogue and set parameters as well as offering an attempt to frame my personal perception regarding the idea of a citizen review board, the first agenda item. Citizen Review Board. Stephen King of Black Lives Matter or This Stops Now Harrisburg spoke, Police Chief Carter, Mayor Papenfuss, Ms. Carlicia Halkeis, am I pronouncing her right? Halkeis, and Dave Vitera all spoke. We ended the discussion with a commitment to continue dialogue. One action item recommended by Ms. Halkeis was for Mr. King, myself, and her to get together to look at how the police collective bargaining agreement would affect a citizens' review board. What I believe will be helpful going forward is our use of a tool called the Racial Equity Impact Assessment, which is a systematic examination of how different racial and ethnic groups will likely be affected by a proposed action or decision. Racial equity impact assessments are used to minimize unanticipated adverse consequences in a variety of contexts, including proposed policies, institutional practices, programs, plans, and budgeting decisions. Resolution 57, 2015, was a resolution ratifying submission of an application to Department of Justice to the COPS Program, Community Oriented Policing Service Office. It's a three-year grant that would allow the city to hire five new officers, and I believe the number is about $739,000. Resolution 58, 2015, is a resolution ratifying submission of a conditions of agreement to the North Central Highway Safety Network to receive funds to participate in Buckle Up PA. Those funds will be primarily used for enforcement, public awareness, and education of seatbelt usage, and the main purpose of the grant is to reimburse personnel costs. Resolution 63 of 15, 2015, is an author, is a resolution authorizing the city engineer to submit applications for traffic signal approval to PennDOT for overhead warning devices at various green belt crossings and a signal upgrade to the existing device at Linglestown and Industrial Road. The other locations for the warning systems are Front and Vaughn Streets and South Cameron Street near the incinerator, if you're familiar with the green belt. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Baltimore. Moving on to ordinance of first reading, Bill 11, 2015. Mr. Patrowski, please. Did you record?
Bill 11 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Reed. It's an ordinance for the purposes of reauthorizing within the city of Harrisburg an area designated as Neighborhood Improvement District, designating a nonprofit corporation to administer the same, accepting a business plan for the district, authorizing the continued assessments for the operation thereof, and meeting all other requirements of the Neighborhood Improvement District Act, and repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts of the ordinances.
We placed in the Administration Committee, and I think all committee members received a copy of that complete DID resolution, I mean ordinance. Moving on to ordinance for amendment, we have none this evening. Moving on to ordinance for final passage, Bill 10, 2015.
Bill 10 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Reed, seconded by Ms. Williams, and it's an ordinance authorizing execution of a lease purchase agreement between the city of Harrisburg and Manufacturers and Traders Trust Company for the purpose of financing up to $3,200,000 of the cost of upgrading the city's streetlights and other exterior lights, and a monitor and guaranteed cost savings from the upgrade project in accordance with Act 39, known as the Pennsylvania Guaranteed Energy Savings Act 62 PACS, Sections 3751 to 3757.
Any additional questions, comments on Bill 10, council members?
Actually, I do, you can suspend.
Have a motion to suspend, Ruth, have a second? Neil, we requested a bond statement, a bond letter.
And I did forward that down in draft, it didn't exist as of the night, so the draft letter did come down, I sent it down today.
When did you send it down, right now?
The letter had to be written, Madam Chair. As I indicated, they normally write them after the deal is in place and being finalized.
The letter that we're reading is from Campbell &amp; Levine, who's the bond agent.
They're the law firm.
They're the law firm.
Yeah, Sarah Boss is the attorney.
Sarah Boss is the attorney?
USS.
And where is she located out of?
Pittsburgh.
She's located out of Pittsburgh.
She was the same attorney who presented to you for the tran earlier in the year.
I just wanted to go on public record so that when we're talking about $3.2 million in debt, that we're doing everything in our due diligence correct, and that the public, that there's no I's not dotted, and there's no T's not crossed, so that we know, that the public knows that we do have a bond intent letter... that the public knows that we do have a bond intent letter for, for this loan and it is a valid bond. That's all the reason I asked for it. Thank you.
Why, why you are still on record or off, under suspended rules, I will note, Madam Chair, that you had indicated at caucus you wanted to take Resolution 53 out of order before voting for Bill 10.
56. Was it 53?
No, I'm sorry. You're right.
We should have. Okay. All right. Let's, when I go back, when I go back into session, then we can.
Doesn't really matter, but that was, I'd rather it matters. 53 says you're authorizing it, when you do it, technically you're voting on the bill before.
Right, right, right. Okay, so it doesn't, okay, so it doesn't matter. We can just go in, we can vote on Bill 10. Okay. Any other questions, council members? Ms. Reed?
I do understand why Neil said that because if the, if the financing's not approved, if we approve the financing, then if 53's not approved, then you basically approve financing for nothing. Is that correct? Is that what your logic is?
It just, it was just, it was a request by, I forget which council member, and I thought it makes logical sense.
I thought 53 was, just following logical.
But it has something to do, we're doing 50 before we do 53 anyway.
Yeah, it's just that Resolution 10, if you approved it, if you approved 10, technically 53 isn't necessary. If you reject 10, then 53 is academic, so.
Okay. So it doesn't matter, we can go in record, just approve it, period.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I have no further questions, Madam President.
May I vote to go back in the session?
Some of them.
Have a second?
Second.
Back in the session. Any other questions on Bill 10?
I just wanted to reiterate that it's very, as the chair, I'm very slow to move on putting the city in debt, especially since we're talking about the debt that we incurred from the senators, the debt that we've, that we got rid of from the parking that we thought that was a good deal, that's not a good deal, and the city has, is still looking at, the mayor announced today that they're looking at increasing taxes three times, three times the amount that we're currently paying for everybody that works into the city. So we're, we're paying, trying to get ourselves together and then we're, and on the same hand, we're asking the city to understand why we're going into debt. I just want to go on record to say I'm not totally in agreement with it. I understand the whole principle behind it, but they're asking for debt and then as you go forward, you'll see in different resolutions, they're asking to pay off the debt relatively early. In the best-case scenario, this debt would not cause a long-term impact on the city of Harrisburg. We'll still be out $92,000 if it's paid off early. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead with the vote. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on it. I understand, my counsel in this concern, for what we're getting ready to do here, but having worked on the committee, when we talked about streetlights, I think the community at large would probably say this would be a good investment. They would clearly understand this is about safety and security. This is about changing the way our city looks. And so it's a welcome change. It's a long-winded change. And so I too would be concerned with the debt that's looming here, but at the same time, people would be willing to put out for something that they can see and know that it's going to affect and change their lives as we continue to move and grow the changes that we make. And so with that, I will be, I guess, vote for this, for that reason, because I think it's important to make those changes in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is any, anyone else, please? Hearing none, please call the vote. Mr. Petrowski?
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Pass. Yes, sorry.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill 10 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 50, 2015.
Resolution 50 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Reed, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution authorizing the entry into a streetlighting upgrade and guarantee savings contract with the Efficiency Network to upgrade the city's streetlights and other exterior lights project and to monitor and guarantee cost savings from the upgrade in accordance with Act 39, known as the Pennsylvania Guaranteed Energy Savings Act 62 PACS Sections 3751 through 3757.
Any questions, comments on Resolution 50?
I only have one, is that, again, coming out of receivership, coming out of the strong plan, again, this is the first long-term contract that we're entering in as a city, and I just hope and pray that the administration going forward will do their due diligence to ensure that all of the energy savings that are guaranteed in this contract are being reported back to the public so that they know exactly that this is not some fly-by-night organization, some fly-by-night contract. You know, there's a lot of work that went into getting this. It's been a year in the works of trying to get this streetlight project going forward. And there's a lot of unknown anomalies, like the mayor said today with the parking, there was projections, there was a lot of projections in that parking agreement that didn't meet the requirement, and the guaranteed savings are a lot of projections in here. And I'm hoping that the administration can go forward and come back to the, to the public next year or six months from now and say, hey, by the way, we've been able to do this and this is what we've actually been able to save and give the public faith amounts as to exactly how much they're actually saving in their streetlight project. Or if the streetlight project is not working the way that it expects to be done, then I'm hoping that the administration, this administration, and many of, because it's going to be, it's a 10-year contract, so many administrations are gonna have to be able to follow up with this public so that it's transparent, so that there's no questions in the future that somebody says, oh, I don't know, they passed that back in 2015, so you have to go back and look in the books. This is, this, we want to move forward with the city, we want to make sure that the city, the residents, and the region all know that this is not something that we looked at lightly. I'm very cautious about moving into any contract because of what we went through. I sat through all of those meetings, as many of us up here did, with the receivers' plan and going through all of the debt, and there's still stuff that is being uncovered as recently as last week that we didn't know about. So we want to make sure, and I'm hoping and praying that this administration and all future administrations know that this is the reason why we're going into this contract, the energy savings are supposed to be guaranteed, and I'm hoping that we get a report, an annual audit via, by annual audit of exactly what those numbers are. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 50 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 53, 2015.
Resolution 53 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Reed, seconded by Mr. Kaplinsky. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to secure financing for the ongoing upgrade in the energy-saving streetlight project with the Efficiency Network.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 53 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 56, 2015.
Resolution 56 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution authorizing an application to the Impact Harrisburg to fund up to $3,600,000 of the cost of upgrades of the city's streetlights and other exterior lights to monitor and guarantee cost savings from the upgrade project in accordance with Act 39, known as the Pennsylvania Guaranteed Energy Savings Act 62 PACS Sections 3751 to 3757.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, I do. When I first saw this, I thought that the city was double-dipping, you know, because you're, on one hand, and if you're listening to this in a meeting, you're like, why are we getting a loan and then getting $3.6 million? Now, honestly, had to look at it and, and really go through it. The timing is what the issue is, is that Impact Harrisburg's been a little slow in getting their executive director and getting the application submitted. If they had gotten their application submitted several months ago, then we may not have needed to go into a loan agreement with M&amp;T. But the benefit is, is if we get the revenues from Impact Harrisburg to pay off the loan, then what that's going to do is free up future, at least $500,000 annually, to go back to the general fund and to fund other public works projects and other public work services. So I just want the public to be very clear as to, you know, we're not double-dipping, we're not getting two loans, we're getting one loan from M&amp;T Bank, and we're basically asking to use our own money, and that's what the $3.6 million is. It's actually our own money that we're requesting to use, that the state is holding in escrow for us. That's all I have, Madam President.
Okay. And let me just verify, I mean, correct something that you said, Ms. Reed. I think Impact Harrisburg, as Mr. Grover indicated to us in the meeting, they had already did their due diligence as far as looking for an executive director. They put that bid out, back out, for bid?
We did.
That application for bid?
An application for, an employment application.
Sure, for bid. The employment application for bid, and what is the status? You said you're at the process of looking?
Yeah, the actual last notice closes the 15th of September.
Okay.
That went out. So they're still coming in. We meant, actually, the board meant today. The board meets again next Tuesday, the same day that the applications are due. We typically meet twice a month.
Okay.
To move the project forward.
So you had to take, put the application out for bid again? And that's, that's the process?
We did. We learned from the first part of the process what strengths were there out there and what weren't.
Okay. So that's, that's why you had, you're at this point where you haven't been able to make an?
Right, and we've had a number of applicants.
Okay. So I just want the public to know that Harrisburg Impact did put the employment application out there for bid, but they had to put it out to, to rebid.
And I'll take the opportunity to say if anyone feels they're qualified to be executive director, you can look at the DCD website for Impact Harrisburg Executive Director Job Description and feel free to apply.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 56 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 57.
Resolution 57 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of an application to the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services or COPS Office to participate in the COPS Grant Program.
Any questions or comments on 57? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 57 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 58.
Resolution 58 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution authorizing the city engineer to submit applications for a traffic signal approval to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation or PENDOT for overhead warning devices at various Capital Air Green Belt, trail crossing, and a traffic signal upgrade to the existing traffic signal at the intersection of Linglestown SR 0039 and Industrial Road Ramp L.
Questions or comment on 63? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 53 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 60.
Resolution 60 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Reed, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of an application to the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services or COPS Office to participate in the Buckle Up PA Project or BUPA.
Thank you. Let me motion to suspend the rules, please. Some of, thank you. Second. I just have a question, Mr. Grover. In the contract, it says approved, we must have an approved and enforceable seatbelt policy?
That's correct, and the, the actual submission date is September 30th, I was advised today, and so that's being worked on through the Police Bureau. There were two conditions, that and a fiscal agent were conditions.
Yeah, the fiscal, and you told me, so we're gonna have a policy?
That is my understanding.
At the next September 22nd?
I talked to the chief, I talked to the chief that it would come down.
On the next meeting?
We didn't pick the next meeting, but we'll come down. I think we have to have it, we have to have to get the grant, we have to get it to administer the grant.
Okay. And of course, you, I understand you have the coordinator, who's gonna be Mr.?
The fiscal agent I asked you is Jonathan Hicks, who's our grant coordinator for the city of Harrisburg.
And this is gonna be a separate line item for when it comes, the funding comes in, right?
I could refer to Bruce to answer that question. Would the grant be a separate line item for funding for the Buckle Up program?
No.
I have to admit that I am not very up on this grant at this point.
Okay. Please call the vote, Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Jonathan wanted to be here, but he, his wife and I don't have any.
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
I assume we can do that, we can, we can make it.
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
All right.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Any other questions, comments?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
A motion to go back into session?
Yes.
Resolution 58 passes.
Some of.
Moving on to Resolution 60. Have a second?
Resolution 60 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Reed, seconded by Ms. Williams.
Second.
Thank you. Hearing none, other questions or comments, please call the vote.
Wait for Shemaine to come back.
Oh, I'm sorry. She's not here.
It's a resolution approving a professional services contract with Suburban Lighting Consultants,
I didn't even see her go up.
We can call her down.
Consultants Incorporated, Suburban, to provide continued professional consulting services
No, sorry, we'll wait, we'll wait for Ms. Daniels.
for the city of Harrisburg LED streetlight upgrade project called The Project.
Questions or comment on Resolution 60? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allott?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 60 passes.
And I apologize, I didn't have 62 in my. Moving on to Resolution 63.
Resolution 63 of 2015 was moved by Mr. Baltimore, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution authorizing the city engineer to submit applications for a traffic signal approval to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation or PENDOT for overhead warning devices at various Capital Air Green Belt, trail crossing, and a traffic signal upgrade[1527.21]
And I apologize, I didn't have sixty-two in my... Moving on to Resolution sixty-three.
Resolution sixty-three of two thousand fifteen was moved by Mr. Baltimore, seconded by Mr. Allen. It's a resolution authorizing the city engineer to submit applications for a traffic signal approval to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, or FENDOT, for overhead warning devices at various Capital Air Greenbelt, trail crossing, and a traffic signal upgrade to the existing traffic signal at the intersection of Lingus South SR zero zero three nine and Industrial Road, Ramp L.
Questions or comment on sixty-three? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-three passes.
Moving on to Resolution sixty-four.
Resolution sixty-four of two thousand fifteen was moved by Ms. Reed, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into a memorandum of understanding, or M O U, with the Dolphin County Conservation District, D C C D, for erosion and sediment pollution control, municipal separate storm sewer systems, general conservation, west and owl virus control.
Any questions, comments, councilmembers? Sixty-four. Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-four passes.
Moving on to Resolution sixty-nine.
Sixty-eight.
You have me, you gave me the agenda, and I don't have a sixty-eight on it.
Give her yours.
Resolution sixty-eight of two thousand fifteen...
Our sixty, our sixty-two.
Was moved by Mr. Allen.
Okay, Resolution sixty-eight.
Resolution sixty-eight of two thousand fifteen was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Reed. It's a resolution certifying that certain grant requirements and objectives of a peer-to-peer grant from Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, D C N R, have been completed.
Any questions or comment on sixty-eight? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-eight passes.
Moving on to Resolution sixty-nine.
Resolution sixty-nine of two thousand fifteen was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allen. It's a resolution confirming the reappointment of Mr. Sean E. O'Toole to serve on the Harrisburg Planning Commission.
Questions or comments, councilmembers?
Question. How long has Mr. O'Toole served in his capacity for the city of Harrisburg?
I do not know.
And when is his term, obviously, this reappointment, so... Can we suspend the rules for a minute?
Yes. Motionist, are you making a motion?
To suspend the...
Have a second, second?
I question, and I know we normally don't do this with reappointments, and we normally say yes. But, you know, sitting on council for twelve years, I've seen the same names come down year after year, every two, three, or four years. And I just think that it's time that maybe we start putting these maybe into administration and giving other people opportunities to bring other names forward, and start shifting things a little bit. I know Mr. O'Toole has served, and I'm, from this point forward, I would just ask that we start looking at these and start making recommendations to open these back up and bring other people on board, knowing that many of these people have served over the last ten years. And it's not that they're not doing their job. I just think we need to breathe new life into these various committees that we have.
How long has he served on here?
Since oh-five.
Since oh-five, so ten years.
Since, Mr. Tousch?
What does that mean, sir?
And I would say that for all of them, not just him. I'm not just pointing him out. It just so happens that we got here, and that was a question that I had. And they serve, hold on, length of the time that they serve?
To this planning commission? Okay.
Your four-year terms?
It's a four-year term?
Yes, four-year term.
So if he's oh-five, why is he up for appointment?
Yeah, if he served ten from oh-five to twenty-fifteen is ten years.
If he had taken over a term, he'd finish out someone's term first.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that as well, so I don't have a problem with everybody being appointed, I mean, asked to serve on the boards from one particular area of the city. So I agree with you. We have people coming down here who, in one, we have six or seven parts of the city, and we're having names come down that comes from one section of the city. So I agree with you. If we're going to do that, we're going, we need to do, we need to be fair to all the citizens of Harrisburg. So if you don't want to confirm Mr. Sean O'Toole, then you don't want to confirm Mr. Fogarty, and then you also don't want to confirm Mr. Snyder. We have three reappointments, so if you want it to be in Administration Committee, that's fine.
If we're doing that, I would just add Vince has only served since twenty thirteen.
Well, we're going to do reappointment for everybody and bring everybody in to the Administration Committee. I would ask that they all come back in.
I don't know that we have to do it all. I think it should be case by case, don't you think?
Well, I'm, I'm in Administration Committee, so we're going to do, we're going to do it for everybody. We're going to be fair for everybody. Mr. Vince Fogarty, Mr. Sean O'Toole, and then Mr. Michael Snyder, they're all offer reappointments. And they're all supposed to be in Administration Committee. I could have put it in Administration Committee. But, Mr. Allen, you asked that we just vote on that tonight?
Yeah, for Vince, I was fine. He's...
Well, then, I'd suggest that I put him in Administration Committee.
I kind of, I mean, I think, I don't know, I feel like we might as well just vote these folks in, because usually what happens is they come in, the reappointments, they come into the meeting, and unless there's some, like, serious objection to them, we usually vote them in anyways. So, like, why don't we just open up the period for the appointment instead of doing it on this end? Like, you know, be more transparent about advertising these commission posts so that we get more applicants.
Yes, we can ask the Administration to do that, to advertise more, so that we could get other people from other areas of the city. Because what we're doing is, under the Administration Committee, and I've looked at that, is we are selecting a particular group of people from one section of the city. So I don't have a problem, so we could call the vote on that. If you want to do the Administration Committee, I mean, if you want to do the reappointment of him, I can put it back in Administration Committee.
I was raising this question because I think people need to be aware, and this community needs to be aware, that it needs to be opened up. Because, like I said, I've been sitting here for twelve years. I see the same names come down. And yes, we've approved them year after year, and they've done a good job. But I think it's time to infuse new people into the process and give other people an opportunity. So I'd say, you know, we can go back into session, and you can call the vote. And if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, then that means someone else would, needs to be, would actually have to apply. Have to find someone else to fill the position. So I don't have a problem with that.
Anyone else, comments?
All right.
Will members serve until there is someone else to take their place? So if we were to essentially put a freeze on it, ask the Administration to advertise the best they can for positions that are going to be, you know, that are up for reappointment, these members are not hurt in that they're still able to serve on the committee until they are reappointed or other candidates come into the play and they get appointed for the first time.
Well, I think it's wonderful that these people come in to take the time to serve on these committees. We cannot find individuals in this city of Harrisburg that want to serve, has the time to do it.
Maybe the way we can look at it is just set term limits.
Well, it is term limits.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, yeah...
They can serve the, you know, the long-term limits, all right.
These are term limits.
Oh, no, they're not term limits.
Every four years. But I guess he staggered, because he has ten years in. So he must have came in two years to fill a vacancy and then did two terms of four years.
What he's saying is there should be a maximum of a certain period of years, so it can't be no more than eight, ten, eight, twelve, sixteen, twenty, or something to that effect, is what he's saying for term limits.
This is volunteer, they're volunteer.
They're volunteering.
Right. And that's what I struggle with. I mean, these people who stepped up and want to do it, and it's not, there's like, there's not a long line of people who volunteer.
I will note, just because we go to the meetings, the planning commission and the zoning commission are two of what I would call the people that have the heaviest lifting, the homework for each meeting, the decision that they weigh, the technical requirements that they observe are fairly involved. And for volunteers, I think we are lucky that we have people that are capable to be on those boards and give their time. Some have been at it for years, but it's been a long ruling process that they go through some nights. Some of those nights go on until ten o'clock at night with them sitting there, so.
But I clearly understand what Council President was saying. When you put people on committees and boards that are from the same neighborhood, then you, when you start and you look at the lopsided way the city's developed, there you go.
That's all I did say in the last couple of years, is the same people, the same area, individuals from the same area. And this city involves three or four or five sections of Harrisburg. So I'm just concerned about that. That is my concern.
Maybe it's work that we, as council, need to do too, then, in terms of encouraging people to come out and participate and volunteer more.
Yeah, we can put it out there for them and ask them.
And so, but I brought it up only because, after seeing the names and knowing them, and I know that they do a great job, and I thank them for their time, but I just, you know, throwing it out there, food for thought. But anyways, that, those are my comments. I like to stir the pot every once in a while.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Vote to go back into session?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. So I can put him in Administration Committee, or I can put him up for a vote?
Put him for a vote.
Resolution sixty-nine. Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-nine passes.
Moving on to Resolution seventy.
Resolution seventy of two thousand fifteen was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allen. It's a resolution reappointing Mr. Vincent Fogarty Jr. to serve on the Audit Committee.
Any questions or comments on that? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution seventy passes.
Moving on to Resolution seventy-one.
Resolution seventy-one of two thousand fifteen was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allen. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Glenn Dunbar to serve on the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals of the City of Harrisburg.
That would replace the Administration Committee. Resolution seventy-two.
Resolution seventy-two of two thousand fifteen was moved by Mr. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Allen. It's a resolution supporting the Senate Bill three hundred, which affords protections from discrimination in housing and places of public accommodations and in employment to individuals based on their sexual orientation or gender expression.
Any questions or comments on this, our amendments? Ms. Daniels?
I need to move to amend the bill, the resolution to replace the word Senate Bill three hundred with the Pennsylvania Fairness Act.
Any questions or comments on the amendment? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Amendment carries.
Voting on Resolution seventy-two as amended?
Can I have a comment?
You have comments?
Yeah, just a comment on, I just wanted to comment on this particular piece of legislation. Us doing this doesn't change anything we already have in the city of Harrisburg. We already have nondiscrimination in the city of Harrisburg. But in communities across Pennsylvania, people can still be fired for being gay. They can be fired now for marrying the person that they love. This is obviously personal to me. I feel blessed. I live in the community of Harrisburg where this does not happen to me. But I have experienced firsthand discrimination across the state when it comes to, just simply for being gay. And I want to stand firm as someone who believes that all discrimination is wrong, but also that I'd want to encourage our Senate and our House to do the right thing. Because, you know, someday I want to marry the man that I love, and I want to do that knowing that I don't have to be fired if I left the city of Harrisburg. And that's a scary prospect. You can leave five miles outside of the city and face, you know, pretty terrible things for being gay. So I just want to put that out there, encourage my colleagues' support for us to stand together and with communities across the Commonwealth to encourage the passage of this statewide legislation.
Any more other comments? Hearing none, please call the vote as amended?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-two as amended passes.
Thank you. Resolution seventy-three.
Resolution seventy-three of two thousand fifteen was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allen. It's a resolution reappointing Mr. Michael Snyder to serve on the Harrisburg Architectural Review Board.
Questions or comments?
How long has Mr. Snyder been on the board? Why don't you read this before you? Amen.
Since oh-three.
Since oh-three. This is his third term, then. Oh, three. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-three passes.
Moving on to Resolution seventy-four.
Resolution seventy-four of two thousand fifteen was moved by Mr. Kaplinsky, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final land development plan submitted by Eighteen South Third, L C, to convert approximately fifteen thousand square feet of office space at eighteen twenty-two South Third Street into a fifteen-one-bedroom loft apartments.
Placed in Economic Development Committee. Moving on to Resolution seventy-five.
Resolution seventy-five of two thousand fifteen was moved by Mr. Kaplinsky, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Gary Lenker of Tri-County H D C L T D to resubdivide, subdivide the five unimproved parcels along the south side of the fifteen-hundredth Block of Soderar Street into three parcels with single-family homes.
And also, we've replaced an Economic Development Committee. Moving on to Resolution seventy-six.
Resolution seventy-six of two thousand fifteen was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution endorsing the adoption and use of debt management policy for the city of Harrisburg.
Placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution seventy-eight.
Resolution seventy-eight of two thousand fifteen was moved by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution ratifying an agreement with the Southland Area Mountain Bike Association, or SAMBA, to develop and maintain a public-use trail system along Cameron and Paxton Parkway's on city property to be called the Parkway Trail Project.
That would be placed in parks and recreation. Moving on to Resolution seventy-nine.
Resolution seventy-nine of two thousand fifteen was moved by Mr. Kaplinsky, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan application submitted by the Pennsylvania Economic Development Financing Authority, or P E D F A, to subdivide the current property and transfer an approximately forty-seven-hundred-square-foot portion to the Five North Fifth Street Corporation.
That would be placed in Economic Development. Moving on to old business, councilmembers? And I move on to new business. I'd just like to let the public know that we received a letter from the Pennsylvania Management, Emergency Management Agency, and it was to Wayne Martin, our engineer. And it goes as such, "We are pleased to inform you that the two thousand fifteen pre-disaster mitigation grant, P D M Program, application submitted by the city of Harrisburg entitled the Harrisburg Sync Hole Mitigation has been submitted to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, F E M A. Your application has been ranked number one in the state pre-disaster mitigation application. The federal cost shared to fund this project is three million dollars. Please reference this correspondence as the official notice that your non-disaster hazard mitigation project application has been submitted to F E M A, Region Three, for further review." And it goes on to indicate that the grant will be initiated by P E M A, grant management in February and March of two thousand sixteen. So at this point, I just want to say congratulations to Mr. Martin for submitting the application to P E M A. And I'm certainly delighted to know that our application has advanced to F E M A, ranked as the state's number-one application. Any other new business, councilmembers?
I do have something. I often talk about the Quality of Life Department, and Mr. Johnson and Mr. West are not here. But I just want to bring to the public's attention, last, two weeks ago, I bought out about the trash cans. The smaller cans are in. I have pictures of them, if you'd like to see them, because I've taken pictures of them. Yes, I'm that obsessed. And the recycling is in. But I wanted to let the public know, I saw what I deem as a beautiful sight. It may not be beautiful to nobody else, but it's beautiful to me. I looked out my window, as I always do on Thursdays when the trash man comes up the street, and I looked out, there was a truck out there, you know, a big packer truck, big trash truck. And there was three people in the truck, which is not an uncommon sight in the city of Harrisburg. At least, it used to be a common sight in the city of Harrisburg where you see three people on the back of a packer truck because there was that much trash out there. But the difference this particular morning is that they weren't picking up trash. There was three people on the back of a packer truck picking up recycling. I thought that was one of the most beautiful sights I've seen in this city ever. Because it goes to show that what we can do when we all work together. And now we're picking up so much recycling that the little recycling trucks that they used to have with the sides open, it's not even efficient anymore sufficient for them to pick up the trash. I'd like to thank the mayor and the state of the city, how he recognized the Quality of Life Department and all of the efforts that they have, and understanding that our, some one-man's trash has become Harrisburg's treasure. You know, I've said it over and over and over again, when you're talking about getting rid of sanitation, that you're throwing money away. And I'm thankful, I'm very grateful that the city and this council were able to work together to save sanitation, because we're starting to see, as in the mayor addressed today, that sanitation's revenues are going up. So we're actually making money on our trash, which is, you know, sends a very powerful statement. And the city streets are so much cleaner now. Areas where I took pictures of hideous trash, week after week after week after week, I drive by there, and I specifically drive by them because I'm so ingrained in my head to look. When I drive down the street, I now see clean corners where there used to be twenty-five trash bags piled up, and I see recycling bins all over. Residents of Harrisburg, we are still not where we need to be at. Remember, glass is trash. Please put your glass in the trash, not in the recycling bin.